Welcome everybody out for our 20th meeting on September 7, 2016. If everybody would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, first on the agenda, we have convene as the Carbon County Municipal Building Authority. I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we convene as the Municipal Building Authority.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Being the Chair of the Municipal Building Authority will continue on. We have one item on the municipal building authority on the agenda, consideration of recommendation from engineer for award of Carbon County Soccer Field Complex project construction. Colin, would you like to address that?
Keep it. Colin, possibly, if you don't know anything, just a little bit of history. We opened the bids for this project on August 31st, so a week ago from today. There was a total of five contractors to submit bids for this project. The project is going to consist of the site work, the utility work, as well as the concrete sidewalks, ramps, as well as building the parking lot and patio for the soccer field site at Fairbanks. The apparent bidder, based on the results of bid, was Nelson Construction, with a total amount of $753,101.05. They were within roughly 10 percent of the, not 10 percent, $10,000 of the engineer's estimate, so it fits within that budget realm. Based on the type of work that's involved and the past experiences we've had, as well as references, with Nelson Construction, I would recommend that we move forward with the word in the contract to Nelson Construction and getting this moving as quickly as possible.
Curtis, you were also in that review process. Do you have anything to add?
No, I think we have, you know, the bids range from the high bid being at $1.3 million down to Nelson's $753,000 bid. And I think that the pricing, you know, their unit pricing and the bid is reasonable and completely a good project for dollars over spendings, so I recommend to approve.
Mr. Chairman, we may want to just read in the other bidders at this point in time, because there were the five that had bid, and just acknowledge who they were, and what the low bidder is, local construction.
Okay, we had Sticker Parsons at $753,101.05. Terry Rutherford's Excavating at $898,976.17. Stratton and Brat Landscaping LLC at $820,676.73.
Hey, on that, Casey. The bid tabulation we had, they had a few arithmetic errors in the way they tabulated their bid. We've evaluated a value from Stratton-Brat at $818,367.05.
Okay. So we'll just make that correction in a minute to be $818,000? And what was the rest of that?
$367.05 and then 0.05.
Okay. And then on what we've received for, is that G E L?
Yeah, G E L.
On our tabulation, it was $1,512,000.
Okay. No, there was, this one had some.
This one had errors as well. So it was $1,333,611, and I can't see the cents.
Twenty something.
Twenty something.
Thirty something.
Thirty, somewhere in there. It's cut off.
Less than 0.50.
Yes. And then Nelco Contractors at $949,896.30. Those were the, all of the bidders, all five.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, that I think is important, that we always again let know that the responsibility as far as our fiscal opportunity here, that the monies for this project is coming from a grant from CIB, Community Impact Board, and also from our transportation and recreational services. It's another good addition that is funded on minerals all the way through, with no taxing back to the county. I'll make a motion to approve an awarding of the contract to Sticker Parsons, DB Nelson Construction at this point in time.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, I second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn as the Municipal Building Authority reconvenes the Board of Commissioners.
So do we.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number two on the agenda, County Employee of the Month, Rose Morris.
Can I be Rose?
Yes, you can.
Our Employee of the Month this month is Lori Perez. She was nominated by several people, and she was given the task of liquidating all of the old equipment and fixtures from the old courthouse, so it wouldn't go to the landfill. She said she didn't want it to go to the landfill. And she spent many a day sitting in an empty, dark, smelly building, so. But she was able to work with cities and schools locally and from our area, and also Utah County, that accepted donations from all of that liquidation. And she also took photographs for the items that were going on, public surplus, and that was open to anyone. So our compliments to a job well done for Lori and any employee like Lori is a credit to the county. Feel like somebody like that is in the good hands of Carbon County. Lori Perez.
Lori does a fantastic job with anything that she's tasked with, and she puts 100% into it.
Part of it, I wanted to say, you know, a big project like that takes a lot of people. So, you know, the ladies in the office, it covered for me, so I could be gone so much. Nick, Nick Fister is amazing, amazingly talented, could take stuff apart, help deliver things to people, he was amazing. Same with Chris and Cody and Lane, who lifted stuff and carried stuff for me. By the end, they started, you know, running when they saw me. It was a fun project, and my last step, put it on my desk. It was really fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Item number three, approval of minutes. Commissioners, we have three sets of minutes. We'll start with the July 20th commission meeting minutes. On item number one, I just had one question on the last paragraph that says Rescue 3 and ambulance, is that a, you know sheriff that says involving, thank all involved, including Rescue, is that three?
Three.
Is that Rescue 3, that's just a truck number?
Yes.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if I was reading that right or...
Where are you at, Commissioner Hope?
Everything's okay. It was, item number one, paragraph three.
Okay.
But everything's correct.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion unless there's J.
I'll abstain, I was excused at meeting. I don't see any, anything further to address, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
I'll step down a second. Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next set of minutes we have are for the July 6, 2016 minutes. I saw no changes. I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And our last set of minutes is a work meeting minutes from July 6.
As we're all in this, I don't see anything to correct or change. Have you heard any issues?
Okay.
Will we be accepting the previous set of minutes?
I'll second that. If motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number four on the agenda, Open Seal Bids for Economic Development Leakage Study. That's Tammy Orson-Bach. As we get into this, I just want to thank Gina and Tammy, for all the work we put into this. Quite a few hours, a lot of thought that went into how this was made. How many did we receive this time?
Three.
Three.
Seth's going to be so disappointed if we haven't got a background.
I know. We may not have a cover sheet for them. We may have just done the proposal. For this one, we'll have a... This one is from, and...
Nadelson Dale Group.
Uh huh.
Say again?
Nadelson Dale Group Incorporated.
And if I remember right, they're out of California. Do you want to look it over and see?
Linda, Yorba Linda, California.
So they've got all eight packets that they need. And they don't, we didn't ask for cover sheets, so I think just, just the fact that we've got them, then we'll distribute them.
I think it would be appropriate just to read them into the record and...
Of the companies.
Uh huh. And then the committee can read you, read back recommendations.
Okay. Because they're...
There's a project fee.
They're going to be all different. Do you want the total of the project fee, if it's on there?
I think we can read those in after you've established if they have all the important parts.
Okay. And this one. Lewis and Young, Robertson, and is it Birmingham? My contacts are green.
Did you say Lewis and Young?
Lewis, Lewis Young, Robert, Robertson, and Birmingham. And they're out of Salt Lake. And this one, do we need it separate? I can tell which ones they are.
Just for you.
And we may need scissors on this one.
It's going to stick out.
You don't see it unless it's at this end. Oh, here it is. And this one's from Zion's Bank. Okay. So that's Zion's Bank, so that's the three.
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we acknowledge those three are our Qs and are our Ps, and have those forwarded to the committee, because I'll take the decision to move this forward as quickly as possible. Do you have a motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Just one more. Didn't you mention we had a few more coming in, or is...
No, we, when we found there was just three, we thought there were four, but there was only three.
Okay. Item number five, Tammy, you're up.
Thanks.
Economic Development update.
Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me come on. Tammy Orson-Bach, Economic Development Director. Just a quick update on some of the things that have been happening. At the first of the month, I went to the GRPG meeting down in Cedar City, and the one thing that we talked about is the fact that it's been very hard to help businesses this year to get rural fast track grants, because, especially in the four counties that are struggling with energy, four or five counties, because they go by the average wage, 110 percent of the average wages, we have, each company has to hire one additional person at that, at that amount. For our county, that's $20.069 per hour that you would have to hire an additional person. So it's been hard to help companies to expand their business and give them this, the matching grant of up to, be $50,000, so up to $100,000 for a project, if they have to hire that additional person. So at that meeting, they have discussed and decided to put together a committee that they're working on to figure out how to do that differently. We're hoping within three months, by the first work, at least no later than the first of the year, to be able to come up with a new way to be able to support our communities with rural fast track. And with that said, we still have had two to receive rural fast tracks in our county, and Emery County has also received two this year. So we're still, we're still moving forward, because I think that's kind of the average of what we as a county have been doing year after year. I went to the Energy Summit last month, or last week, and met with Dr. Laura Nelson. We have been talking with Alara Emery, which is one of her staff members for quite some time. And as of Thursday, Wednesday this past week, she decided that it's time for sure to put together an advanced coal research group, or resource group. And the idea is to bring people together within the counties, it will be Carbon, Emery, and Sevier Counties, to discuss coal, what we can do differently with coal, how we can educate the community better. And so we're going to bring in the Keller's Office of Economic Development, PDC Utah, some, she's got a list of several other organizations to bring in. Their hope is to meet bi-monthly, and I suggest if we start monthly till after the first of the year, so we'll see where that goes, but it probably won't be starting in about two or three weeks. And they'll ask for one of the Commissioners, and Dr. Laura's being very specific of who she wants, and she's handpicked who she wants on this committee. But it's been fun to be able to be part of this creation of something new, and see the state really grasping of coal and wanting to support our families with coal. The next thing is the use of our foundation search, as we know that we pay for the membership, and to be able to use the database for foundation search, and there are several people in the county that are using it in different departments. But it's also fun to say that I think we have four or five organizations that have already submitted, or are in the process of submitting for grants that are outside the county. And so they're coming in and using a computer right here, and it's been a resource to the county, and I'm really excited to be able to support the nonprofit organizations that are coming in. At the first of the month, we, I also hosted a brownfield educational day, where we had Bill Reese from the Utah Department of Energy Development, as well as, I went, my mind something blank, the gentleman from Denver came in, he works with the University of Kansas, and he came in to talk about brownfields, what they are, how the federal government can assist us, the different phases. And then we met, we do have land right here in the county that we could, that the county owns, that we could utilize. The grants will be coming through the first of October, but we don't feel that we as a county are quite ready to submit a grant by the first part of October, so we're going to put that off a year. But that will help us down the road. Next year, we'll be prepared and ready to put together a large grant, and hopefully receive that grant to help clean up, whether it's coal, or mines, or whatever we decide. I know that the county's got some areas that they feel are probably brownfield that we would be able to qualify for. And that's the first phase, is to even identify what we have in the county that would qualify for that. And then the second phase would be to identify what the cleanup would need to be, and that would all be free. And then the third phase would be a 20/80 match, so we would come up with 20 percent to help clean up, clean up that area. So that will give us time to figure out what we need to do, what's really important, and then pull our finances together. The next one I want to talk about is, we've been working on our airport master plan, and that's almost finished, but the exciting thing in the airport master plan is that part of that airport is going to be set aside for manufacturing or some type of business. It has to do with, it must, the company has to do, have some type of business in the aviation field to be able to qualify to go on there, point into the FAA. But I've already been talking to some companies that have shown interest, and so, once we get that final, we'll be able to finalize it, find out exactly what the criteria is, and then we'll be able to approach those companies and see if they're still interested in moving to the airport. With talking about the airport, on October 4th, we have an aerospace road trip that we're going to be having. See the Governor and Lieutenant Governor coming in. They'll be in Emery County in the morning, and then we will host them in Carbon County in the afternoon for lunch, and all the way through dinner. So we'll have elected officials come through lunch, and then while we're having lunch, or shortly thereafter, part of that staff that are coming are going to go over and talk to high school and junior high students and college students about robotics and engineering and science, and the different areas that these kids can go into, especially the STEM programs of high school and the junior high kids are already involved in. Get them excited, they're going to have some bubble rockets, and they're bringing in an F-16 flight simulator, and some really fun stuff, some women engineers to talk to them, get them excited, get the students excited about advancing their careers in a different area that they haven't, haven't even thought about possibly. And then, once this is over, so that will be the beginning of the day, go visit some businesses, and then we'll end up at dinner at the event center, where we'll invite many businesses in the community to come and have dinner with the companies, and possibly become suppliers, and introduce themselves to the aerospacees companies, so that they will hopefully be able to start having the suppliers right here. I've been working with our PCCAC representative, and we're going to put together a day to get people signed up prior to that on the SAM's website, so that they'll be ready. And we're also going to put together a meeting to have potential suppliers start to get ISO 9000 certified, so that when they're ready to start ordering from our suppliers and our businesses here, they will be prepared and ready, because that's one of the things the government usually looks for. I just opened up these different proposals for the leakage study. That is the first step that we're doing in our strategic plan. We're planning a five, 10, and 20-year strategic plan for economic development for the county. Where are we at now, what do we need to do, and where do we want to go and be, and where do we want to grow and be when we grow up, basically? So in the next 20 years, what do we want to look like, and what are the steps that we need to take? But we need to know what we have here already first, and do an inventory, and what we are already losing to somewhere else, whether it's online sales, or purchasing products on the other side of the mountain, or wherever it's coming from internationally, whatever we're doing, we need to figure out where we're at now, so that we can grow and set a plan with that. So that's what this is, this was about today. A week and a half ago, I set up an appointment to meet with Alan Matheson. I was not able to go, Commissioner Potter was able to go, with Senator Hinkins. And the purpose of that meeting was to be able to find out, Alan Matheson with the DEQ was not able to talk specific and answer specific questions with projects we have going on. He could advise us as to what we could do to prepare the businesses before they get to the point of needing to get different types of permitting, and what we could do to streamline and make things easier and better in our county. So that was what that meeting was about. We understand it was very successful, it was good to create those relationships and get that started, and I apologize for not being able to attend. The last thing I want to talk about is my Economic Development Committee, which is really, I feel, starting to come together. They're starting to work well together. It takes a few months to get some, get a committee together and get their personalities to start going, and now we're having a hard time stopping the meetings, because they get so excited. But we have a beautification subcommittee that, and actually, as soon as I'm done here, I'm going to rush over to the city council in Price to that meeting, so we can talk to them. But they are, their first vote is going to be at exit 240 to make it look nice. And they've gone out, they've talked to Nelson Construction, and Nelco, and UDOT, and the USU Eastern, they've got a lot of people already, organizations already involved, to either with actual funding, or with just service that they're going to get, and in-kind, in-kind support, so that we can get that. That will be the first step, is to get the exit looking nice and attractive, and welcome people off the exit. And then we'll go and focus on First North and Main Street, and then on Third and Fourth East, just like going into the college. So then, as they go back towards the hospital, it will look nice, as they come this way, as we give them tours within the county. Hopefully, we can have the whole area look nice and welcoming as people come in. Another committee I have is a customer service committee. We know that that's been a challenge, and so with that customer service committee, I've encouraged them to reach out to Shaleen Johansson with Tourism, because she has just purchased a new program. And rather than duplicating work, we need to work together, so that's the next step that they're going to be doing. I also have an IT subcommittee that, which, my name's going blank, Accelerant, came in, and they've been pulled away in so many directions, they haven't been able to continue with starting a networking group. And so the IT group is, and subcommittee is going to start doing networking meetings monthly, hopefully within just two or three weeks at the latest, and then bring in speakers from outside the area. And the hope is that we can find out who in the area is working already in the IT industry, and then be able to tap into their resources and help that area to grow. Because if we don't tap into the technical technology today, we're not even going to be able to bring in manufacturing companies. That is our future, that is the way that it is, and the lifestyle's going to be from now on. So if we don't have some understanding, we're not going to have the businesses here. So what was exciting to me is that even though Accelerant has been pulled away from our area, they think that they've got about 30 jobs, they're just being ready to sign the contract next week, hopefully with a large company. So that will help, they'll start with 30 and go up to about 50 jobs. But even with that said, they've already filled three at-home positions of programmers. And so we've got three companies, three people that were getting ready to put their homes on the market, that are not going to leave now, because they're here working. And that made me really excited to think that they didn't want to leave the area, and we were able to help them to, to stay here in the place that they love, and it's been their home, their whole life. The other thing is our aerospace group that's coming in, we're going to start a subcommittee afterwards, and work within Emery County, and work with the school districts, and with the college, so that we won't lose that momentum once they come in. But we're going to be able to bring programs into the junior high and high school, as well as into the college. And this, the state has some grants, they're looking in to help us with the educational part, portion of that, so that we can continue to get these kids excited and moving forward at making education fun. It's not just going to school and learning the math, or learning the science, but there's a purpose for it, and they're excited. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on what we're doing. We're not slowing down, we've got a lot of other things in the works, but we're excited that we're able to at least see things moving in the right direction. Do you have any questions for me before I end?
I might be interested if these success stories of Accelerant are...
I might be interested if these success stories of Accelerant are not too shy. It might be nice maybe to hear them tell their story.
Okay.
That would be exciting.
I can see, I can see if one or two would wait for me.
And just thank you for the work that you're doing. Kami is very modest in that she was involved in a multiple car accident on I-15, not because of her fault in any way, but she walked away from that, and she probably should have had a whole different outcome. So, thank you. And the meeting was very productive with a vision of very quality, and we look forward to continuing to work with them on a number of fronts, including the revolution fields application. So, things are continuing to move in that direction, but we're glad that you're recovering and that things are okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kami. Item number six, review of personal property tax appeal. Mr. Kingston.
Yes. Eddie Gresham, my name is Mr. Kingston, I'm a private engineering. Can I get a quick clarification of where we're at before I begin? I know last time I was in issue of whether the commission was able to take another review, as far as I understand, that is not an issue at this point, as far as cities. So being able to take 2016 under review for a review deal.
I believe that's always said. My recommendation is based on representations we made to AFAB, Mr. Kingston, that we would give him, we would give them the opportunity to present this appeal. So that's my recommendation, is that you let it go forward and present that. Okay. That's our view.
So previous years are too far back and need to pass. Okay. Thank you. So, under the bill, we want to fill the classification, and under 1592-1114, section one, it says items in personal property held for sale in the ordinary course of business are exempt from personal property taxation. And it farthered out defines what inventory is, is goods intended in personal property, goods of process, and so on. And this item that is personal property this time is inventory. And last time, there was a question of how it was actually classified, if AFAB classified it as inventory on the tax return. And I did give Mr. Holmes the copy of the tax return from 2014. This is the most recent tax return file for AFAB. If you look at page two on that, then the third item down, this title inventory, on the right-hand side, you have a total of 1.2 million. And then on the page three is a schedule of how that never came out, the 1.2 million on the bottom. If you look at the detail above, the recent inventory underneath the header bottom wall for 1.06 million, that is the inventory that is in question, that personal property that we are filling is classified correctly, and it should be classified as personal property exempt under the inventory exception under 1592-1114. He also asked last time, anyways, Mr. Olderson asked if we would bring a list or an attempt to sell or move the property, inventory that, what marketing attempts had been done. So I forwarded to him a copy of the company that they have brought to try and move that inventory, and this is a company that has contacts in multiple countries, and they are trying to move this inventory for AFAB. And on page two and three, it just shows the listing of some of the components which could probably, the property is in question.
Mr. Kingston, what's the time period? When did they, when, I don't see anything on here that helps me understand when this listing began. And I think that's crucial. I think that's important to know when this listing began, because otherwise, it's an attempt to, to fill the record with, with what looks like an attempt to sell inventory. I think it needs to have taken place prior to the time that...
Before the tax was set.
That's right. So, and I don't see anything in here that helps me understand that.
I do see at the bottom of the page, copyright 2016, and so that does appear to be much more recent than the area you were talking about.
That's just the actual website told, and so I don't know exactly when he was starting listing on the website for this, and he had been trying to sell these for multiple years. And he had a contact with a money in Russia that he was consulting, was trying to move the property. I don't have a copy of it, but I believe it was in 2012 or 2013, I don't remember, but I can find out for sure when he actually did. But he had been, since it was pulled over and they've been trying to move it, they did look at this, this money innovations company to help to promote the item and market it. So this was, this was before the tax was assessed, this was at least a couple years ago.
I know that we had requested to receive a lot of this information within a week's time, so we have another week or so, or 10 days. Did you just bring this to us today, or did you send it to a person?
Well, I sent it to Mr. Olderson, and my understanding that he was going to report to two commissioners.
Alexis, do you know what date these were received?
No, I don't.
Well, these I actually gave to Mr. Holmes today, because he informed me that they did not receive that from Mr. Olderson.
Were there, were there any other documents you gave to the county clerk's office, other than the tax return and this website?
No, since that's what we were doing. Just these two.
The other thing from our discussion last time, and I thought we were asking for multiple years as far as returns go, so we could see the history on it. If 2014 is the most recent filing, then I would like to see at least three years of that. The other real question that you painted at is that even though these items have been supposedly for sale, is that the response, as far as in the past, you've not asked for any reclassification of the equipment. And so we have always held that as personal property. And so, that's the other piece that I still think is missing here, is not wanting returns, but also, you know, an explanation of why it hasn't, wasn't protested in the past for reconsideration. But also along with that is, how does the company intend to pay those back taxes that are due and payable to the county at this point in time? So those are still questions in my mind that need to be answered as far as that goes.
The first question as far as, because the, sorry, we reminded, the first question was as far as inventory went, was...
The number of...
Oh, why tax...
The number of tax returns, asking for at least those three years, but then why, you know, an explanation of why the company hadn't asked for this in the past, because we're dealing with multiple years here, and also, what's the plan to pay those back taxes?
So the first question, the reason they didn't address it at that time is, there was a misunderstanding as far as who controlled the inventory, and it was a bankruptcy, or sealed money, and they didn't, the trustee for the bankruptcy was arguing and claiming that the property belonged to another party. And so then, the accounting didn't know if the other party was, if the trustee was covering the taxes, or if the other party was covering that, and they didn't have the actual amount of this tax, because we called the county, but it was being centrally assessed, and we addressed this last time, and so they didn't know that it was being simply assessed, they didn't understand on that. But I don't think they were aware of the classification of your inventory at that time for this item, and they didn't classify it correctly. But because it was not being followed up on, and it was centrally assessed, they didn't understand that there was even tax at all. And when they, when I was given the file to take care of, I called the county, and they did give me 2014 and 15, and on their records, there was nothing previous to that. And then, just more recently, we received a notice that 2012 and 13 was far past due because it wasn't in the county record, because it was centrally assessed with the state, if I understand correctly. So as far as the past taxes, we were going to address that with the county and decide what we need to do to take care of those, but I haven't addressed that yet. I wanted to address 2016 and get this one cleared off and taken care of as much as we could, and then take care of the election at that point.
And I understand, understand your need and want to do that, but also, part of the problem I see is that I want those back ones taken care of prior to ruling on 2016, or an agreement in place, so that we know the county is held whole. And I think that that's only fair, and if that equipment was held by the other company prior to bankruptcy, there still have to be tax returns. So if AFAB is not the holder of those assets in this classification, I'd like to see those returns on whose they were, because that plays into, was it inventory? Was it depreciable equipment? What is the asset classification that goes with it?
As far as in possession, it was in a possession, but through all the years that are in arrears, from my understanding, yes.
Take one, we want to be able to verify that.
Okay. And I can verify that too. And the court was, was the one that was, was trying to address the issue, because the trustee was claiming that it had not owned the property, but from my understanding, it had had possession of property, but it was under a court order, they could not do anything with it until the court finalized the decision of who was actually entitled to the property.
And has that decision been finalized?
It has been, and it has, it is the owner of the property, entitled and possession.
I agree with Commissioner Potter that I think before making any favorable or less than favorable decision on 2016, or 2015, both of the year in question, that what is in arrears should be brought forth and paid what's due. And I think that would probably, in my opinion, before any further action or any further commitment of publicity takes place, that I'd be considering.
So if they're not able to pay it within the, within the valid appeals, and their due, and what is the implication there?
Before any action can be taken further and any appeal process, that, you know, what's due comes forth, I think would be valid consideration before, comes before us again, I think.
So if they were not able to cover the total amount, would they be able to put on some type of payment plan or so, or something where they negotiate how it's going to cover? Would that be satisfactory to be able to address 2016 at that, at that point?
I think, I think we'd have to look at the assets that are backing that. We've got a couple of our other elected officials that can weigh in on that for us. Julie, Julie, Kay, if you want to take some, thank you.
Chief, I'm the Carvin County assessor. I just want to make a quick clarification. So AFAB was centrally assessed up until 2013. They are the ones that sent us the rendition, showed us what they had in their position with the class codes. So the class codes actually came from the state, which we carry over onto our system. They didn't file in '13, and they didn't file in '14, and they didn't file in '15, and they did file this year in '16, which they actually removed one of the pieces of equipment, but they didn't change the classification at that time. The 12 and 13 that I think we're getting confused on is for the real property, if that's case.
It's the personal property.
The personal property. So they don't owe us for those years.
That this is owed.
The big old tax out, per May of '17. And then one other question I had is if they have never filed with our office, we've just taken this information from the state tax commission, and they've removed a piece of equipment, their 2014 scheduled inventory says they have 1.6 million, 350, that matches exactly what our office shows. And I'm just kind of curious on how that matched down when you removed a piece of equipment this year that this is from 2014.
So this is, this is the estimate that was given on the appraisal value, and I can show you where that came from. And so the appraisal value that is on the, let's see, right here. So this is the appraisal value that was done by Norris Corporation. They appraised the value of it, and they said, in pure new condition, it'd be this value, in scrap condition, it's this value, current condition, estimated resale value of this 1.06. And so this is the value that's on this tax return.
Right, and it's also on our 2016 tax return.
Yes. Because we haven't had an appraisal since this one. And so, and we haven't depreciated, we have this inventory, and it's just because the inventory, we haven't, we don't appreciate it, but we have to, we have to get it reappraised. We just have to reappraise it at that point. So we're just saying appraisal for the value of 2014 had for this current year.
And so, I'm just curious what, you know, if it isn't not paid by May, then it's going to go for tax out. So what recourse do we have to take up the tax out?
Be a part of the equipment.
Right.
Because of the, because of the current valuation. See, and those are all questions that play into what I was talking about, of how we, how do we settle this? In the past years, knowing that, yes, there's a tax help pending, and you're going to talk about a resolution on '16. So I think there's a lot more information that we need. I think this just bears, starts to scratch the surface, which I think still has to look at.
Okay. So can I get the information that you would like to privately collect for you? So first, you want to know...
Well, and as you gather that information, instead of just sending it to Seth, you'll send it to commission@carvincounty.utah, and we will get that to the other elected officials as well, to Kami, and to Julie, and to Seth.
Okay.
And Seth, if you receive that stuff, will you make sure that gets sent out to the other elected official Seth? Though we'll get it from the commission, but to Julie and Kay? Thank you. Where is this property located right now?
Right now, that's over at a property in, like, Castle or the Zee Land? No, it's, I've got that, there at home.
Is it at the mine?
It is, it's a property near Wellington.
Was that over by Savage Corporation?
Savage and Brockel, yeah. Might have loaded up, it's over there.
Christian, do you have any other comments?
Well, I would just indicate that, no, you're not going to act on this today, but, you know, I think if we were in court, I don't think this would be satisfactory, what you've received. What you need to see is that this is being offered for sale in the ordinary course of business for the relevant time period. I don't know if that's the case or not, based on this. We don't have any statements by anybody, we don't have any affidavits. This just seems to be, this is very minimal. And so, my recommendation to you, and I'll state this in front of Mr. Kingston today, is that unless you receive something more substantial, that you deny his request for 2016, regardless of what accommodations are made to pay back taxes, because this just doesn't tell us that, this, this could have been listed today, for all I know, which is not the time, which isn't sufficient to know that it's inventory. So, but if you're going to allow him to provide more information, that's fine, but I think this is just too minimal to, to grant, grant anything on. So if he wants to come back, if he's going to bring back evidence regarding, or bring back a proposal to you for past year's repayment, he ought to also bring back some real evidence that, that we can really sink our teeth into beyond this, because I, I would recommend that you treat this as inventory based simply on this. This just seems to be something to, it just, it's not nothing, I don't think.
To treat it not as a...
Correct, yeah. And that's my feeling with minimal stuff, I mean, anyway, I just don't think it's sufficient for what we're looking at and trying to do. And I don't know quite how to generate the list, other than the returns, the filings that we'll have within the county, the marketing side of it, centrally assessed information, all of that needs to come forward, if we're going to even carry this forward. And to me, commissioners, the commission, the returns are interesting, because they indicate that they have made their representation to others, but it's just a, it's just a characterization. It's not in and of itself proof that they were actually offering this stuff for sale. It's, it's a return that says they call it inventory, it's just them saying it twice. So I would really like to see something that indicates that this stuff, this equipment really was marketed and put out there, if you're going to grant extra time on this. if you're going to grant extra time on this. Do we have a waiver, Commissioner?
So it sounds like the decisions we're going with is to either deny it now or allow extra time to provide evidence that must be compelling enough for us to alter from the current recommendation.
Well, and what I heard earlier is that you wanted to stay further consideration of 2016. I think what you indicated was you'd really rather work with them on getting resolved prior year's payments. I don't think there's anything wrong with you indefinitely staying the appeal for 2016 until you get something worked out that way, and then you can resume picking that up. So if you don't want to require a deadline by which you submit stuff on the 2016 appeal, that's fine. I don't think you need to do that if you're going to focus on resolving payment for those other years. If you'd rather do that, if you'd rather do those things one step at a time, you certainly can do that. Unless, Julie, I don't know if you or Casey, any problems with that? If you have deadlines by which you need to get that resolved by?
Well, actually, by stakehold, anything past 30 days, I can seize itself. So for '14 and '15 or '16, I can still put a seizure notice on it and cancel for a year.
But you, okay, so, but that doesn't sound like a deadline with respect to resolving for 2016?
No, it's already passed to collect an interest in that.
Okay. So I don't see that you need to impose a deadline on resolving this one if you want to first resolve the back taxes?
We have one affidavit from, which dated from Charles, now through as a consultant on the last time exhibits, where he says that it's since 2011, he's been actively marketing the line well for sale. And so that's when they started to sell it, 2011. And I can find out from when they started working with mining innovations, an affidavit from them, anywhere else that is involved in that. And also, I get the previous tax returns for the last few years. And so the question I have is, I don't want to have the appeal process lapse before we can actually address it. And so if I can get some kind of date.
When is for any of them on that?
I haven't looked at it to see, you know, when the appeal process has to be completed by?
I don't think there's any date.
It's already filed by a certain date.
I think you just have to file it by a certain date, and there's no formal completion deadline for it.
So as long as it's stayed as open, it should be fine.
So I believe I have a motion, if we're ready for that. I'd go ahead and move that we stay the appeal indefinitely until back due accounts are settled satisfactory with regards to the treasurer and assessor.
Can we get a certification of sale, does that mean asking if they cleared off, or just a payment title's place?
Completed satisfactory with those two departments, so.
So if they stayed to a satisfactory, then?
That means that you just need to be in contact with them, work out an agreement that that can be presented and taken care of before we further the appeal.
And then brought back for final approval? Yeah, I think it's important that it be brought back for you to approve.
Yes.
You'll have that part two, if that's satisfactory, I'll second that.
Yes.
Okay, that's amended. I'll second. We have a motion on the second, any further discussion? Commissioners, I would recommend that you also select a date by which this is going to come back to you. In other words, if it can't be worked out, if an agreement for payment can't be worked out, I think it needs between the assessor and Ahab, then I think you need to, you need to call the shot on that, say?
We do have the tax sale coming up on May, but next year, it might be perhaps, it might be prudent to be much sooner than that.
Well, I'm thinking.
Could it go like October 5th?
That's what I think.
At first commission meeting in October?
So next month?
Yeah, is that, Kay?
We have.
Julie, is that okay? Okay, so if you'll amend your motion one more time to allow October?
I'll just, yeah, I'll go ahead and move that we stay the appeal until past due accounts can be resolved satisfactory and approved in commission meeting October 5th.
Sounds good, I'll second. Do we have a motion on the second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
If you'll work with all the departments, just take care of getting the information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consideration of possible approval of a master lease, or master license and service agreement with Midware Human and Social Services, Inc., Senior Center, Debbie Colby.
There I am. Christian, did you review that?
I did review it.
What good do you?
That's a miserable software contract. Real high software engineers' interest. So no, it didn't look good to me, but I, but it's okay. I think you can approve it.
Okay, this is the first time they've ever asked us to sign a contract.
What's it for? That's the thing I couldn't, what do you need it for? What do you use this software for?
Every single thing that we do at the senior center, every time somebody comes in and has a mail, every time they come in and use the library, every time they send a mobile mail, it has to be entered into the state's software.
And this software, as I read it, this is software that keeps track of medical conditions?
Because we have what's called a MAPS report, I don't even know what that stands for yet. I just know it's the MAPS report. And we ask certain medical kinds of conditions, like if they, specifically, how many meals they eat, do they take so many medications a day? Because those questions determine whether or not they qualify for things such as mobile mails.
And this software is where the information is stored, I think?
Yes.
So as I read the contract, I don't see anything wrong with it. The only thing I know is that we need to be very careful in who gets access to this information and that we have to protect and safeguard the information stored on that software.
Right, and the state?
But you're aware of that already?
Yes, and the state has control of that.
So it is the state's software?
Yeah, it is the state's software. And like I said, this is the first time they've ever asked us to sign a contract. And they said next, from now on, it will be a simple one-page contract. And each year, we have to pay a fee to be able to use their software.
So you say, Melon, it'll be a one-pager, why are there so many right now?
I don't know.
Is the one pager just going to refer to some of this?
Probably will just refer back to the original contract.
Have they indicated what the fees will be?
It's $409 a year.
They have indicated any kind of change. I know a lot of times when we see these contracts, it means escalated.
No, it's the exact same fee that we had last year. It was called synergies last year, but they've got a new name this year. And this is about the third or fourth new name that they have. The IT department's familiar with it and what we have to have on our computers in order to run this. We've been using it for years.
And Commissioners, you talked to Debbie, we actually have this program twice because we have two different programs. We run nutrition and?
Well, no, it's the same program.
It's the same program, but?
Right.
We pay for one and the state gives us one.
And the state gives us one. So we can have it on two computers. Because there's no way that we can get that done with just one person working on it. Because we have to record every single thing that we do in our building for the state.
So this is just licensing on second?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second that.
A motion, a second, any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you guys have a con? That needs to be signed, do you need me to? I just want to know who's going to sign it?
Casey.
Casey will be signing it, okay. And then I can pick that up from Sandy, maybe tomorrow or something.
Do you have the original, Sandy, there? Okay.
Do you just need one?
As far as I know, I didn't read.
So I could too, yeah.
I didn't read anything where it said we needed multiple copies, so.
Okay, I'll get that signed and get it back to you.
All right, thank you.
Why don't you just stay there?
I am, I'm a lady.
Consideration of possible approval of contract with liter- literature?
Liturgical.
Liturgical Publishing, Inc., for the publication of a senior center newspaper, Debbie Colby.
Yeah, we had contact with this company, they're out of Colorado. Previous years, we've sent out anywhere between 1,300 and 1,500 newsletters to the seniors in Carbon County.
Oh, I dropped some samples of what they do for other senior centers.
Yeah.
They have a senior triathlon in British City?
Yes. Apparently.
Wow.
Anyway, the gist is that we have discontinued our newsletter to reduce our budget. Because to send out 1,300, 1,500 newsletters is quite costly. But this company is being used by a number of different senior centers in the state, and it doesn't cost the senior center anything. They will go out and get advertisers to advertise in the newsletter, and those will be the sponsors for the newsletter. They will provide us with, I can't remember, four to five hundred copies of the newsletter, and then we can distribute those how we would like. So we would send those out to mobile mails, and we would have those in the center so people could just pick them up. We won't be mailing them out. But it sounded like a good deal to me. We can have a newsletter, there's colorful, it's colorful, you can put pictures in it. They will give us training on how to use the program that they want us to use, which we already use that program, but they'll have a, they'll have a specific format that they want us to use, and they'll provide training with that. And I just can't see where there's any real drawbacks.
And also, if they sell over $11,000 worth of advertising in a publication year, then they will give the county 30% of the ad revenue that exceeds that $11,000. So I'm guessing it won't be much, but there's always a possibility that the county will get something, and it doesn't cost us anything. I read through it two or three times, trying to figure out what it's going to cost us before I realized, they get the ad revenue, they produce it, and if it reaches that threshold, then we get some money. But it doesn't cost us anything, so I'm fine with the contract.
The only other thing that's in there is it is for a five-year period of time. And I did not see any other, because there is an option to cancel it after with one year's notice.
With one year's notice, so that the advertisers would be able to get their, you know, if they, right. I can't anticipate canceling it, so.
One question I have, and I just, it just popped in my mind. Will this be available online?
Yeah, we'll still have it available online on the county website. Like, our newsletter's online right now, so it'll still be online. We'll offer it to all of our mobile mail clients. There's some of them that are not interested, but we would still send them out a menu, a monthly menu, and make sure that they've got, you know, like any pertinent announcements. But if they want it, we will send it out to all of them. Because we can just have our drivers take it when they take the mail out.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to get that signed now, because as soon as I get it in, the process will start. We're hoping to get our first newsletter in November, so. Do you have that? Good. Sandy, you need that copy back here, right?
Yes.
And I just want to tell Debbie, thanks for all your work on this and looking outside of the box to help us save the money, but still provide some of the services. I appreciate all the actual work that you and the senior center board have done to do that.
There's a lot of seniors that just don't use the internet. We email letters out to those that provide us with email addresses, but you can believe that we went from like 1,300 down to about 50. So this will be a real boon for a lot of the people that still want that information. And so we'll have it there for them, so, thank you, that's all I've got.
Number nine, consideration of possible approval of grant agreement with State of Utah for crisis nursery at family support and justice center, Shelley Wright.
Hello, Commissioners, how are you? Great. So this agreement is actually through the Department of Workforce Services. It's TANF funds, which means temporary assistance for needy families. During the 2016 session, the Utah legislatures approved $1.5 million of TANF funds to be distributed evenly among all the family support centers in the state. The grant will run for three years. It will be additional funds to offset crisis nursery expenses and offset the shortfall that we received beginning of this year for my home visiting contract. So I was able to keep my employees, I didn't have to get anybody off. It's guaranteed for three years. It's a reimbursement contract, so for the first year and second year and third year, the funds total 136,000 each year. At the end of the three years, it will be 408,000. My understanding is that whatever I don't spend in the first year can roll over. And so, which is great, because we don't lose the money, it will roll over. So this has been great. It will be retroactive, so anything from January 1, I can go back and bill for services.
Christian, have you had an opportunity to review this?
I did look at it and find that the TANF grant is pretty common. There's a lot of agencies that use it.
It's been very, we've had several meetings with the Department of Workforce Services in the process of how do we bill out for these services? I mean, we've never contracted with Department of Workforce Services before. So it's been new on our end, the reporting requirements are very similar to my state contracts, but all in different forms and different. But a lot of the timeframes and the dates, the quarterly reporting and financial reporting is all about the same.
Yeah, so the food bank, the association, local governments, there's a lot of local applicants to the TANF that come to our community.
Yeah, this has been really, been exciting for all of us across the state, what we're able to do with this money, so.
Well, it's nice also, reviewing the contract, again, because the quality program that you operate, it wasn't hard to meet those standards that were there.
No, it was over there.
Because you're already doing them, this helps us provide maybe a broader service to those that need it.
Well, I'm sure you guys are aware of our van that the senior center donated. So the funding will also help with the gas and the upkeep on the maintenance of the van. We still have to get the van wrapped, so we can put our logo on it. It'll also help fund that expense as well, so it's exciting.
Well, I'll go ahead and move to approve the application.
I'll second that. We have a motion on the second, any further discussion?
And we just point out, as we are to so many of the local partners here in the community, that Tammy Ursenbaum with Economic Development has the new foundation, Foundation Service. I don't know if you've had a chance to use it yet?
Yeah, she did contact me about that.
Perfect, I just want to make sure you're aware. Thank you, keep that goes on.
Okay, we have a motion on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Great, thank you. I do.
Do you want that signed right now?
And I only need one copy.
Item number 10, request for help with cleanup of old targets at Hopper Gun Range, Billy, Bill Curtis.
Hold your words, too. My name is Bill Curtis and I represent the Hope of Gun Club. A nonprofit corporation. It's been around for forty years. We've, uh, hold membership, non-membership, uh, shooting twice a week as well as lots and lots of preparational shooting. We've supported, uh, the, uh, four-H club and high school rodeo, Eastern Utah College, church organizations, and several charitable, uh, organizational fundraisers up there. Anyway, long story short, we're we're, uh, on state institutional trust group. The last April came and took an environmental survey and asked that we clean up targets. Targets have been thrown there for the last forty years, so there is quite a bit of it out there. We're asking that, you know, if you would be able to provide the equipment to move that to landfill. Daniel Campbell is a member of the club and is willing to to donate his off-time to operate the equipment if the county could provide the equipment.
What equipment's needed, Bill?
Well, I think we're talking about a dump truck and a front engine motor.
Just a kind of scrape?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure just what the plan would be, but there's quite a bit of it out there. Like I said, it's forty years of it, probably two hundred yards in length and sixty, seventy yards in width and as deep as ninety inches deep in the two center target fields that we use. So there's there's quite a bit there.
Is it is it the lead that Sidla objects to?
No. As a matter of fact, I've got here, if people want to see it, they came out and they did a lead survey and they did, and I guess it's hydrocarbons that they're concerned about. The lead was no issue whatsoever. Two different areas of the land falling. Where the targets fall, uh, there's three or four items that they read by that said need to be cleaned up. Not hazardous. They're not capable of going to the.
So it's clay pigeons, primarily?
Clay pigeons. That's exactly what your tar pitch.
Okay.
Basically hydrocarbon.
And and that's all stuff our landfill could accept?
I think that's the only question I'd have. To me, it seems like the county can lend its equipment in the aid of a nonprofit organization if it if you find that's in the benefit of the citizens of the county. So allowing the use of the equipment, I don't think would be a problem. My only worry would be whether our landfill can accept whatever clay pigeons may have. I don't know why it couldn't, but.
I'm talking to the Sidla people who perform this. They indicate that the landfill is not a problem for any of the products.
Okay, we'll have to do.
I don't know, but they would know.
We'll have to do a little bit of investigative to see if that is acceptable.
Lately, we've had to, our, the people, uh, the state agency that runs, that oversees landfills has been very, um, they've started to become more particular and correspond with us and, uh, make his final reports timely. So that would be the only thing I'd be concerned about, Commissioners, just making sure that we could deposit that stuff.
Is there a deadline by which you have to have this done?
No, actually, uh, our contract probably got fifteen more years in the contract. And the contract calls for returning or leaving back the way it was at the end of the contract. But they're concerned, both appearance as well as it's it's time to clean it up, and it is, there's no question. So they're not ready to time frame, but the sooner we could get it, the happier all of us would be.
Well, the only reason I ask about timeframe is from here till, uh, the end of the year, for sure, we're we're quite busy. We have some EWP projects, some emergency watershed protection projects that are going on in Wellington, in, uh, Helper, and, uh, as well as some county projects. So we're we're pretty busy right now. So if it'd be later or early spring, that would be helpful for us.
Okay.
I'll talk with Daniel. Don't check his schedule, but.
Daniel indicated that probably October, November would be okay to. Yeah, I think he's talking weekend and, you know, I don't know that for sure.
It's only his time if we have the equipment.
But.
So I I would make the, uh, motion, Commissioners, that, uh, that we go ahead and would approve him if he used that equipment in in the benefit of the Helper Gun with stipulation that it is cleared with the landfill prior to the dumping of materials there.
Can I second that motion? Sounds appropriate.
Is that, I think, that can I answer?
That's a good question.
Yes, you're appreciated very much.
Yeah, but probably one of those things that Daniel could help us with.
Correct. I'll have Curtis review. He does the the permitting for the landfill. We'll make sure that is acceptable waste and we have a motion in the second. Your motion in the second? Any further discussion? All on favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number eleven, and it's been a long time waiting, and I appreciate your, uh, your. It's not your, it's not your patience. You guys have been extremely well behaved and thank you for being here. Um, we have a report from the Boys and Girls Club, so come on up. Thank you for being here.
Hi, um, my name's Bon Powell. I'm sixteen and I go to Carver High School. I was the youth of the year for Carver County and I got to participate in going to state for Carver County and I got running around for Utah. Um, it was so much fun meeting other kids who loved club as much as I did. I've been a member of Boys and Girls Club for almost four years. When I started coming, we met in a classroom at Mont Harmon. Then we moved into a bigger building. We had a lot of fun there. We have a lot of memories. We had a lot more teens coming and we really loved the staff. I still feel like Dana Mahfet. Then in the summer of two thousand and fifteen, Josie, our director, told us that we were moving to a different location. I was worried, but when I found out where we were going and we got to see the new building, I was excited. We have to, we had to move out of the club and into a new club really quickly and a lot of teens helped out. We moved so much stuff. It took some time for us to get the new building open, but when we finally did it, it was so cool. Then there were the little kids. They were new addition, but I opened them with big arms. I love them so much. Um, for the whole first year, we had to share their part of the building and thank you for sharing your part of the building with us teens. Some days were fun, some days were not so fun. This summer, we finally got our own place. We got the downstairs open for the teen, um, part of the club. We have two huge rooms now and a lot of cool things to be. We have pool tables, a ping pong table, foosball, and two huge bean beds that we flip on. A project, a projector and even a virtual reality system. We just started club again about two weeks ago and we love it. It feels like we have a place just for us to come home at, to come after school. We do homework hanging out and our staff, Mama Des and Tug Tug, are awesome. I want to thank the commission for letting us have this new club. You should feel good for what you are doing to help us. Club has made a big difference in my life. I still remember when I was in a dangerous situation. I called club and one of the staff came and picked me up. When I got back to club, it was really hap, I was really happy that my brother was there and he was safe. The staff took us and got us pizza and talked to us until my dad come came and here on me and picked us up. Sometimes I joke that club is my life, but really it is. Really, though, it is so important to me. I just really want to say thank you. You guys have made a difference for my life and for the other kids.
Do you think I'd like to give them the stuff that we make?
No.
Yes. Just take this up to them.
Very nice. That's great.
That's you guys the superheroes?
Boy, it looks the same.
Thanks to your secretary for getting me pictures. Sorry.
What's that? You should come with the kids, not with me. Yes.
So, um, as the director of Boys and Girls Club, um, we just wanted to have the opportunity to come and report to you and show you, um, the faces of the kids that you're helping. Um, and I just wanted to tell you some of the things. Um, but because of your generosity, Boys and Girls Club was able to do this last year. Number one, we were able to allow you to the grades K through five to come to what had been a teen-only club. Um, number two, we served two hundred and sixty-three members during last school year of this summer. Um, we moved from serving about twenty teens per day to more than forty-five youth, um, a day by the end of the summer. And in just the past couple of weeks, that's moved up to fifty-six kids per day. We've graduated more than twenty members from four programs that focus on financial literacy, pregnancy and drug prevention, healthy lifestyles and resiliency. We ran a program called Summer Brain Game, which helps prevent grade level liquid Lindsay loss for the kids that we serve. Um, we provide additional programs in music, sports, cooking, art, photography and leadership for the older kids. Um, we've helped many students improve their grades significantly from the beginning of, beginning to the end of the school year. We have the kitchen facilities to run a full snack program. In the last, um, year, we provided over ninety-nine hundred servings of healthy snack to kids in our community. We've also created a food pantry to allow members to take home food on evenings when they might not have sufficient at home. It's allowed us to create separate spaces for homework, games room, reception, staff offices, and as Fon said, an entirely separate space for our teens. Um, we've been able to take members on outings to local parks. So we've pulled the pool in Helper, BLM sites, museums, the library and a lot more places. Recently, we took twenty of our members who attend most frequently. Many of them would never gone to Lapune and I wish you could have seen their faces. We've been able to provide opportunities for our members to participate in monthly service projects, including working with the Health Department, United Way and Habitat for Humanity. And we also, um, employ two full-time staff and between six and eight part-time staff. So in a community that's facing some struggles, I think that's a really beneficial part. But ultimately, um, what we're most grateful for is that you've enabled us to fulfill our mission to inspire these youths to reach their full potential as successful, compassionate and responsible citizens. And without your generosity, we couldn't have done any of that, so.